We'd like to welcome everybody to the February 6, 2020 Regular Meeting of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown Board Meeting, calling it to order at this time. A pledge of allegiance, Mr. Perino, will you lead us, please?
(inaudible) One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any moments of silence? No? All right. Mission of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown, Mr. Crescendo.
We strive to provide fiscally sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to be competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, Mrs. Clark.
Here. Mr. Crescendo.
Here.
Mr. Gomez.
Here.
Mr. Lassner. Mr. Perino.
Yep.
Here. Mr. Tobiasin.
Here.
Here. Thank you. Need a motion for approval of our agenda? Don't move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Need a motion for approval of the regular minutes from our January 23, 2020 meeting?
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So passes. Moving on to our personnel action items. If there is no, if there's no problem with anybody, what we'll do is we will do our first Personnel Memorandum 16A Administrative, we'll do that separate, and then we'll do Personal Memorandum 16B Instructional and Personal Memorandum 16C Non-Instructional together. Can I have a motion for approval of Personnel Memorandum 16A Administrative?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So passes. Ringing together 16B and 16C, can I have a motion for the approval of Personnel Memorandum 16B Instructional and 16C Non-Instructional, please? So moved. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So passes. Is there introduction of personnel?
No.
Oh, yes, there is.
Yes, yes.
Oh, there is?
Yes. There are introductions this evening.
No, they disappeared.
Mr. Dunleavy and Ms. Burr, would you like to come on up and start, please?
Good evening. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce the newest member of our admin staff at our FNS office, Martha Moncato. She comes to us with a couple of years of experience as a food service worker, as administrator for our summer meal program, as well as nice background in the health arena. Say hello.
Hi. Thank you.
Yeah, this is for you. She'll be with us tomorrow. We're looking very much forward to it.
Awesome. You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you.
Before we move on, may I have the microphone for a second? Mrs. Sorrentino, go there. You have, oh, no, the introduction? Oh, that is correct. Sorry.
Do you want me to wait?
Go, go, go.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
President Williams, Mr. Delmore, members of the board. It gives me, it gives me great pleasure tonight to introduce Mr. Kyle Slingerlin to you. He'll be joining us in our ROTC program. Master Sergeant has decided to retire, and we wish him well, but we will miss him desperately. It gave us, though, the opportunity to welcome home a cadet who is a graduate of our program, who went on to join the Navy and hold various positions within the Navy before getting his certification to be an officer and a teacher in our program, and came home to give back to our kids. So, welcome, Kyle.
Just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to working with the school district, the school, Tracy, and most importantly, the students. So, have a great middie night. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Welcome.
I'd like to say a couple of words. Chief, you're not going to get away so easy here. Come on up here. I'd just like to say you were one of my students. You graduated in 1999, if I'm correctly, and you went directly into the Navy.
Yes, sir.
And you hold a AA degree in electrical.
Yes, sir.
Engineering, and you're up for your BS degree.
Yes, sir.
So, you have big shoes to fill, but I know you're going to do it as a graduate of Middletown, and we expect big things from you, so you carried on, and I know you also hold a number of naval certificates.
Yes, sir.
The Sea Service, so good for you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you for being here.
All right, now I'm allowed to speak. I think it would be remiss, on behalf of our school board, as well as myself personally and all the administrators and teachers in this district, if we did not recognize on tonight's agenda, Mr. Tom Scott's retirement.
Oh, no.
I cannot tell you all of the feelings I have tonight in terms of ambivalence and feeling working with a consummate professional, a true leader in our district for 21 years plus, and been a real, real, real supporter of all programs, facilities where they are today. As a contributing factor, Tom, you understand how much we're going to miss you, but we certainly wish you very well in your next life, your next chapter, if you will. But the fact of the matter is, this district owes you a great deal of gratitude, and on behalf of everyone, I want to thank you for all your many, many hours, even this morning at 4:35, when you and I had some conversations about the weather. You're always there. You've been a big supporter of this district in the number of years I've been with this district, so I want to thank you for a genuine heartfelt gratitude because you deserve it. And on behalf of everyone in this district, we are very grateful for your sincere loyalty to this district. Thank you very much. And in closing, I wish you this. There's no surprise that your life, in your next chapter, be like a piece of spaghetti, long, smooth, and full of dough.
So I'm sure that all of us could have something to say about Tom. When I got the news, I just looked at him and said, "I'm not happy, but I understand." And so, you deserve, you deserve the best, Tom. You deserve the best, because you have given the best. So, we as a board, we applaud you, we thank you, and we celebrate a little bit of rest you're going to get now. We celebrate with you and wish you all the best. My thoughts, our thoughts and our prayers are with you in your next endeavor. You're not going yet, you're still going to be here with us for a little while, so we got a whole lot more to say in the coming months, but enjoy, Tom. Thank you so much. Moving on, moving on, recognition announcements and community reports. We don't have any recognitions on tonight, but we will, at our next meeting, have some public recognitions. But I want to take the opportunity, even though, even though time has gone by, and I do, I do want to apologize for the late start of our meeting, but there are so many wheels and so many things that turn in this district that sometimes we have to take a little bit of extra time to do some of the things that we needed to handle, but we're here. Promise you, we promise you, we will be as expeditious, we will handle things as expeditiously as possible. So that means there's no promises, but we will do the best we can. But I do want to give an opportunity for all of our board members to come with their recognitions, announcements, and community reports. I will start down. Mr. Gomez is down there all by himself, but I'm going to start down with Mr. Gomez on tonight, and he can give us, we'll keep, we'll keep as brief as we can, but in the interest of time, but Mr. Gomez?
Sure. I love being brief. With respect to community events, we, last Sunday, there was the Elks Pancake Breakfast, the annual pancake breakfast. I believe they have at least two or three a year, and as always, our ROTC young cadets were there assisting with the serving of the food, and of course, a great event to attend. I know that the Middletown Lions Club will be hosting on, I believe, March the 7th, Saturday, their annual spaghetti, spaghetti dinner from 4:00 to 7:00 o'clock. With respect to the events happening in the communities at that time of the year, where different heads of state, governors, the president, mayors give the State of the Unions, the mayor will be understanding, the city of Middletown will be giving the State of the Union next week, something to stay tuned. And with respect to what's going on in the scene in Albany, there is, there may be some here, I believe there's a move to ask for hearings in the state legislature or survey why New Yorkers are leaving the state. And again, there is an effort also to reform the recent bail reform laws, which I've discussed with board members, to restore judges' discretion to be able to set bail where there is danger if a arrested defendant is let free. And with respect to other matters that affect education, both the president and the governor of New York, I think, took strong stands on behalf of religious freedom. The president addressed the importance of making sure that religious freedom is honored in the public school system, and Governor Cuomo addressed that he wants to see as part of the history curriculums, and emphasis on how faith has played an important role in American history, as well as other aspects of American history. So those are some of the things on the burner.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Blumenau.
I just wanted to congratulate our first class of 2020, attended graduation last night. I know that Mr. Crescendo will be talking about it as well, so I'll yield my time to the gentleman to my left. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. C.
Thank you very much. There were 16 graduates, 11 graduated early. The Times Herald Record did a very nice little article about them today. I overheard in a conversation that there was a young lady who graduated, who a year ago in September did not speak a word of English, and she graduated, I don't know if she graduated early, but she graduated anyway, and there were just, just a couple of quotes. First of all, Superintendent Delmore and President Williams gave very inspirational speeches. The applause they received was proof. The graduates heard what they had to say and reacted to it also. So just, just a couple of things here. Estefania Pagan, 18, holds her diploma after walking across the stage at Middletown High School's winter graduation Wednesday. She plans to enlist in the Navy and volunteer internationally before she starts her service. And one other one, Kyla Philippi, 18, said she had outgrown high school, and she's ready for the real world. She plans to attend a four-year college in the fall and plans to do volunteer work between now and then. But one of the things about this, you know, I always say this is one of the best events I've attended, and this one's a little bit more special than others to me because it is so personal. It's, it's right up there. There are only 16 students graduating, but there had to be well over 100 people out in the audience, and you looked out, when they called out a name, you can see who the parents and the family were because they just erupted, you know, the smiles and the clapping and everything, and it's very, very moving, and every student that walked across the stage had to smile, they probably never smiled like that before, but it was just, Sorrentino, thank you for that experience. It was wonderful. And now I'd like to just say a couple of things about Black History Month. Did you know that, let's see, Canada, United Kingdom, Germany, and Netherlands also celebrate Black History Month, but not necessarily in February? But there's so much, you know, you could do something every day, a couple of times a day, and never cover all the people that are involved with this. I mean, just, just currently, Elijah Cummings, so during the truth from the past, Thurgood Marshall, the first African-American member of the Supreme Court. The 13 black students who entered Memphis Public Schools on October 3, 1961, and some of them entered as high as the eighth grade, oh, no, I was, excuse me, I was in the eighth grade at that time. I had absolutely no clue what was going on, these brave students and these brave families walked across the lines. But I'd like to talk a minute about George Washington Carver. One of the fallacies is that he did not invent peanut butter, but he was responsible for 300 separate uses of peanut butter. And one of the, his life, he was kidnapped from his natural parents as an infant and sold into slavery. He spent most of his life with one family, and at the end of the Civil War, when slavery was abolished across the country, the family decided, I don't know if this is the right word, I was going to say decided to keep him, but they, they kept him as a member of their family, he and his brother, and they right away understood his intelligence. They taught him to read, which was actually outlawed in some parts of the South, and they realized how smart he was. They sent him to college, Tuskegee, I think, and he became a botanist. And just a couple of quick facts about him, he's known as the Peanut Man, and again, he discovered 300 uses for peanuts. He was a nutritional advisor to Mahatma Gandhi. He was the first American, African-American to have a national monument named after him. But one of the things that moved me the most was this, that in this current atmosphere, in some areas, the lack of civility or not enough civility, he passed away in 1943, and this is current today. So, here are his thoughts. Be clean both inside and out. Neither look up or down to the rich, neither look up to the rich or down to the poor. Lose if need be without squealing. Win without bragging. Always be considerate of women, children, and older people. Be too brave to lie. Be too generous to cheat. Take your share of the world and let others take theirs. Those, those are definitely, definitely words to live by. And whether you know it or not, the school district is now a part of history, of Black History Month. We have here the first African-American, black president of the Board of Education, Pastor Williams. So you are now a part of history. And I guess that's it. So thank you for your time. Bye.
Mr. C. Mr. Perino.
Congratulations, Pastor Williams. Vinnie, you helped me segue into what I wanted to say about Black History Month. You spoke nationally, I'm going to speak locally now. Put it up, guys. In Maple Hill, I'm just going to give you a little sampling of what groups are doing. At Maple Hill, the students are learning about various famous black, as Vinnie mentioned, famous black scientists, famous black inventors, women in history, black women in history, including Rosa Parks, Harriet Tubman, George Washington Carver, on, on, and on. They're reading, it's an interdisciplinary project. Carter Elementary School, they're doing a two-week, again, multi-disciplinary project on Martin Luther King, reading both nonfiction and fiction biographies, fiction on famous black leaders. They're also going, doing something very interesting there. They're going to be making what is called a dream quilt, and they're going to be displaying these, each grade, and they're going to be displaying these quilts. And to cap it off with Carter, what they're doing, they're trying to build their academic vocabulary while they are studying black leaders and black activists. So, congratulations to these buildings and to continuing on. In Monhegan, there's going to be a display about the past and the present, and they're going to have, I think we have some photos there. Not to be, down the high school, Emily Young, she's the new chair of the media department. There is a big display in the front window, and I happened to see that, went over on the purpose to see that last evening. There's going to be quotes by various black leaders, men and women, and the English teachers are working with the social studies teacher, social studies instructors, doing various reports on literature, culture, and the history of black, the history of Black History Month itself. So, congratulations, and this is just a very small sample of what the, what the schools are doing. Continuing on here, Elks Pancake Breakfast, and we're going to have the participants over, the helpers over at the next meeting, but the Elks Pancake Breakfast, if you get that up. A lot of credit goes to the, our NGROTC unit, and the NGROTC unit, the past year has, has done over 5,000 hours of community service. They're always there when you need them. Monhegan Junior Honor Society and the Maple Hill Elementary Honor Society. Monhegan Junior Honor Society, Michelle Ibera. The Elementary Honor Society, a new advisor, Alexander Hansen, and hopefully have these people in the next meeting. I want to give a shout out, we talked about the NGROTC for a moment, I have to give a shout out to the whole unit because the, they were graded outstanding in the, in the pass and review which was held, I believe, in December. So shout out to Commander Wall, to Master Sergeant Willard, and also to the cadets. They do a fine, fine job. Norville O'Connell in the high school was featured in the Middletown Times Herald Record a short time ago, and the STEM program for the work on robots, they do so much more than that, however, but it was, it was an excellent article, and you know, the STEM department, along with our other departments, they're preparing students for future careers, and that's part of our mission statement also. So, congratulations to Norville and to that department and to the Middletown High School. Thank you, Tracy, again. Continuing on for a moment, good financial workshop at your school a short time ago. Courtney Safris ran that workshop. Bill Donahue was there as the administrator, and it turned out very well, and there was good attendance at the workshop. The bowling team, I happened to go down to Quinn's Pins this, before this meeting, and they were all ready to go. I didn't stay for the whole match, but they seemed to be doing very well. They were facing a very competitive Kingston team, so congratulations. The food service, I'm going to wear one of these new hats here. The food service is getting new uniforms, and they're changing from the red to the midi-blue, correct? With various shades of blue. So, nice job in the food service, Middletown midi-wheels on the move, right? And they're always doing something, and they're always improving, they're adding new products, and there was talk in the last meeting about the vending machines at Monhegan, and so, if a new person in the food service administrative structure, I'm sure you're going to do a good job also. So congratulations there. And just finally, the graduate corner, I always like to, I always like to feature some of our graduates. Two of our graduates, NGOTC graduates, are doing very, very well. April Cowblion, she enlisted, she received a degree, and now she's been commissioned as a naval officer. And Dylan Ortiz, class of 2016, he is also doing very well. What we said about April, you could say about Dylan. So, again, very valuable program, that NGOTC program in this district. So I'm done, I abbreviated, and on to Mrs. Tobiasin.
But something you need to know, that if you have a business, Mr. Perino will work for a hat.
Why not? Mrs. T.
I have nothing to, this evening, Pastor, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. So, last night, last night, the graduation, the winter graduation, which is one of my favorite graduations, because as the superintendent put it last night, it shows not only the perseverance of our scholars, but also, also their achievements, and, and so we celebrated them last night, their families, so many that are graduated early, but those that persevered through obstacles, and I think that's a lesson that they all need to, to take into this next stage of life. Mrs. Sorrentino, great job on last night. The program was excellent, and everything went, everything went along real well. So, kudos to the staff, to the staff, to the team, to, to, to all of the instructional leaders and the teachers, did such a fine job in, in getting our students there. And, and here's, here's a true statement, we've seen improvement, and we thank God for that, but we still won't be satisfied until we have 100% graduation. And I don't think that's, I don't think that's, and that's not anything negative to say, it just means that we keep working and we keep moving forward, and I think that everybody here is in agreement with me. So, lastly, lastly, it is Black History Month, and, and so my colleagues, my colleagues have made their statements. I intend on having a presentation, a short presentation, on our next meeting, but I do, I do, you all know that I'm the one that says things sometimes to make people think. I celebrate, this is Black History Month, and what I appreciate about the fact that my colleagues each came with, with something different, is that we always understand that Black History Month is bigger than just slavery and bigger than just a dream. African-Americans have made impact in every area of society, whether it be sports, the arts, science, the medical field, every area of life. And so, we take the month, we take the month to remember that because so much has been lost in history, so much has been swept under the rug, but it's history that is, is worth, is worth looking at and worth teaching 12 months out the year. So, I don't just teach it to my kids during February, but I teach it to my kids all year long, and so, so they'll, they'll know, they'll know that they have value, and, and that they'll know that every one of us, regardless of what our background is, regardless of our race, regardless of where we come from, everyone has value. There is no such thing as throwaway people. There's no such thing as people who hold no value. We all hold value, and we all bring that value. If we all bring that value to the table together, we, we have success and together we have achievement. So, okay, I'm done. I'm done. That was my, that was my, that was my little commercial for February, and I'll have some more at our next meeting on the 20th. So, let's move on. Let's move on to opportunity, our first opportunity to address the board. This is our first opportunity, you have four minutes, you can come, you can sign in at the, at the desk there. We will not dialogue back and forth, we will not dialogue back and forth, but if there's something that needs to be addressed, we'll set up a meeting with our, with our administration, and we'll go for it. Our councilman, the doc, is in. Our councilman, the doc is in the house.
President, Count of Four, sir. I haven't been here in a long time, so did I get retro on the four minutes, like 45 minutes, or?
I'll give you another, I'll give you another third.
Okay, well, thank you. So, one of the great questions of our time is how far into the year do you say Happy New Year? Now, conventional wisdom says it's January, but I never put stock in conventional wisdom, so Happy New Year. I congratulate you on your leadership role on all levels, to which it applies. Black History Month, it's probably good that we have it, probably bad that we need it. I'll let that lie. The basketball game, obviously that's been scrutinized and analyzed and evaluated, as you all know, I'm sure. Chief Awanshi did a, a very good presentation at our council meeting, where we really went through frame by frame on all the events of that evening. I certainly speak on behalf of the council, we're very pleased with the way it was handled, both at the level of the school district and the level of law enforcement. I think many components in the Newburgh community agree with that. At our council meeting, we had a contingency of people, a councilman, NAACP president, one of the students and her mother. I think they were very professional in their articulation of their disappointment as to how things went. And some of my colleagues on the council offered their, their remedies for the situation. I personally said that I'm sure that both the administrations of both school districts can figure it out. It's not really rocket science, although, on one level, you could say it's real simple. The game's sold out, you can't come in. But obviously, for our two communities, there's a lot more to it, and a lot more to the history of it and the interactions. But I'm sure that smart and calm heads will prevail, and I congratulate you in advance on bringing that to a satisfactory closure. Yes, as was reminded, the state of the city will be in the next council meeting. I think we in Middletown have a lot to be proud of, both for the school system and for what city government has done. Chris did mention to us in her Park and Recs program presentation, that you, as a school district, have made accommodations for us since the high school will not be available this summer, that you saved a place for us for our sports camp program, and we appreciate that as well. She made the observation, I would agree, not every community works well between city administration and the school district, so we, we really appreciate that opportunity. As far as what's happening in the city, the Wilbers Building is occupied. If you haven't gone to Oak and Reed, please do. Jo and Laura are homegrown Middletown students, they've come back. I'm happy to say I was on the committee that decided some of those grants, and I think we made a good decision with them. The Chocolateer and the Farm to, Farm to Table Baker will be open probably by the end of the month, so we're looking forward to them as well. So that's a really good thing. We hope to be in the new Park and Rec building on County Road 78 by the end of the summer. That's a good thing. If you ever had to deal with the dormitory authority of the state of New York, you may know that things do not go quickly, so don't be in a rush for that. And we had lots of impediments to success, but we seem to have moved forward. The Bus Depot project, as you probably know, got a little bit sidelined by the change of the ownership of the bus company, but the city administration tells me we're still trying to move that forward. We had plans for a really nice new bus depot, and with the change of ownership, we kind of got sidelined, but we're hoping to put that back on track. Heritage Trail is moving forward, despite the popular opinion of the last 24 years. The Reservoir Trail is moving forward also, probably at a better speed. Now Tommy Scott, really, say it ain't so, really. Now, I was nervous when the soup went down the spaghetti trail, because I thought he was going to go al dente on me, but he did not, so that's a good thing.
Did you mean al dente? Oh.
Pas de pas de deux, okay? I stand corrected. Habla un peu de français, español, parle d'italiano. But I've known Tom a very long time, we're neighbors, we're friends. If you wanted to look up consummate professional in the dictionary, yeah, his picture would be there. His contributions in the last two decades are too many to count. Lots of projects that went well, some that went well because Tom was there. So really, on behalf of the council, I want to extend my congratulations to you and the city's appreciation for all that you've done for the school district. Thank you very much, I appreciate your attention.
Thank you. Always a pleasure. Anybody else would like to address the board? You can come at this time.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Houston, and I'm a semi-retired teacher. I had the privilege of being able to retire at a young age, and I'm just a per diem teacher. I had the pleasure of teaching, I hope you don't mind me saying, Mrs. Creedon's son, and what a delight that was. And I want to compliment all of you on the wonderful spirit of community that I see here tonight. I've been a resident of the city of Middletown since 19, I'm trying to think now, about 2000. We bought our house up here in 2004, but I was already teaching at the school, so I kind of thought of myself as a community member back then. And I want to do more with my time to serve the community, and hope I'll be one of your colleagues in the future. But I just wanted to take the time to say, I was really impressed with the camaraderie among everyone here tonight. People introduced themselves to me, and were very friendly, and I've been watching the Middletown Board of Ed meetings for quite some time, and I was always a parochial school teacher, so I like to see everybody coming together, and, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else like to address, address the board at this time? You can go right, Lizeth, you can go right to the, right to the podium, there's a piece of paper there, there, I think there's a piece of paper there, you can just sign your name, sign your name, and, and then have your four, have your four minutes.
Okay. Four minutes, it's a little bit short of a time to unload so much. I know some of the board members might know me from the social media group page that we have for the Middletown community. My name is Lassari Zagirre, and I'm actually known as, you know, a community activist, and I've been behind initiatives like the Greenlight New York Initiative. I'm a strong advocate against prison reform and, oh, for, excuse me, prison reform and against the bell system that unfortunately affects people with lower income disproportionately. And I'm also a big undercover kind of person when it comes to research and new development in our areas. I brought up a question on that social media group, if whether or not Middletown has been severely affected by overpopulation, overcrowding, especially with a lot of new development, yet not having, from what I understood, the land to expand in certain areas, so it's, it trickles over to locations that may have the infrastructure for these new developments, and I mean high-density apartments, not like houses. So Town of Walkill is actually the community that I live in. But the school districts that these developments are going to have, will affect Goshen School District and actually City Middletown School District. So I asked, well, is there a sustainability plan for that? Because I come from the city, and I come also with experience from South Florida, where a lot of development happening really fast has to come with contribution from developers for that infrastructure. And I wasn't sure if that's something that was brought up to you guys, because this is something that was actually shown to us after our new supervisor stepped in, where it wasn't really spoken about too much with the prior supervisor, at least not in our town. So we had to really dig and try to get caught up with what's happening. So I talked to different moms that told me, yes, it is a problem, I'm not sure exactly how it was addressed. I had Mr. John Lassarren, I hope I said that right, he sent me some information via email, I looked at the videos, and the only thing that I saw was the reference and speaking on how to address like overcrowding in the lunchroom, which I wasn't sure exactly how that would work, because I understood that it's a new, it's in the media room now, that they're refurbishing, but there's no kitchen. So there'll still be long lines for it, and I guess a little bit longer access. That's what I heard on the, on the video, that there was long lines to get these lunches, and very little time for them to eat it. So I was like, I don't know how that addresses the bigger issue, which what I understood from some moms, that in some cases, there's 32 students to a teacher. I heard that from another mom, that her student was rejected from enrolling into Middletown this year because of the overcrowding. So I was like, okay, there is a problem, and I have no idea how it would be addressed if more development comes in. So I talked to other moms, I talked to Goshen School District mom, and she's upset because Pyramid Group, which is the Galleria Mall, they're one of the developers that are trying to do, hopefully what they want is apartment buildings versus a hotel. But if they get their apartment building, they would be in Goshen School District. But they already have actually a tax abatement that they don't contribute to their school district, but instead get a subsidy, I think through a pilot program, that they continue like getting renewed. So the cost of that difference is actually paid by the Goshen residents, which I was like, oh my God, that's crazy. But that is something that I felt, well, hopefully when these developments do start building, that they don't go through this pilot program, and I'm not sure if that's something you guys have control over, but I wouldn't think it's fair, on top of them building and benefiting from the development, that they would get a tax break for, from the school on top of that. So it was kind of like, that, that was off-putting, but I did speak to other parents that, I wasn't sure if they would be affected by it, but I learned that some school districts are actually under enrollment, like they didn't, they don't have enough students for the, I guess, the capacity to sustain their budget, and that includes Minas Sync. And I was, so one of the things I'm, I'm talking to the supervisor with is how to maybe, I don't know how you guys do it, but the school districts get realigned to allow Minas Sync to service the students that perhaps might fall, maybe in that little cutoff where it's either school of City Middletown or Minas Sync. And the purpose, again, is to hopefully not see that there, there's going to be more issues in that school district of overpopulation. And again, I'm not familiar, I'm still researching, I need you guys to give me some research to really understand what the demographics are and what the issues are, because I come, again, from a background that they want our zone, our zoning laws changed, or they want variances in special permits, and they want all these things at the cost of the community versus, hey, if we do bend for them to make this happen, we should, yeah, one minute, then we should have something that would contribute to infrastructure for the schools, affordable housing, at least 30% of their units for affordable housing, because these units are starting at $1,850. So I don't know how everyone's, you know, income is, but from what I understood, it doesn't fit the affordability in Middletown or Town of Walkill, or even Goshen, because I've been told that that's not affordable. So I'm here to just find out, you know, express myself for what I'm doing when it comes to this research, and also understand better what you guys have as a plan for this possibility of having maybe over, maybe, I can't estimate, but about 500 more students coming into your school district. So that's.
So let me say, let me say this real quick, Lizeth, we're not, we're not, I'm not going to dialogue, but I don't want you to be intimidated by the four minutes, because we do have a second opportunity to address the board. So if you need, if you need more time, you can come back at that second opportunity as well. So I wanted to make sure I let you know.
Yeah, it was just, because I'm, it's a lot, so I kind of, if I had to tell you all the research I have so far, it would be so much more than four minutes. But I, I want to just at least get it out there, if I could get information back, if not, I would have to foil a lot of this information, and it takes time. I've already foiled a lot of the information that I have, that's how I know where these school districts are falling. And I just really want to know what the sustainability plan is for you guys, but not also the developers, because I feel like if they're going to get tax abatements for this, if they're going to try to get like, you know, they're caught in, you know, cake and eat it too, so to speak, that's not fair. The community needs to benefit also from these developments.
And we, we agree. Our superintendent is going to do this.
Yes.
Our superintendent tonight is going to address some of those issues tonight for you.
Oh, okay.
And, and during his superintendent report. And, and then after that, if you, if, you know, there's always an open door for you to come and sit down with, with administration and ask necessary questions.
Yes, it's all part of the research, because people don't know me very well, but if those that do know what I am able to do, when I make a little noise.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wants to address the, the board? Good evening.
Let me follow the rules and sign. My name is Irish Dawn Howard. I am a community person, I purchased a home. Mr. Perino, I've seen him a few times at both schools. And I, I came from the Florida school district, so coming into the Middletown and Large School District, there's a lot of diversity. I, I do appreciate the diversity, I do appreciate having different types of teachers, and having different methods, so to speak, and how they motivate, but coming from Florida and into this district, and this is not being adversarial or being critical of how things are done, obviously, but I'd like to see, I'd like to see programs within the school that, that target motivation, that target giving kids with abstract minds the stimulation that they need to be the best presentation that they can be. I don't see in our schools, and, and I'm very involved, more than probably they'd like, I don't see a lot of motivation, I don't see, I just see task, I just see, it's almost like remote-controlled teaching. It seems like assignments are given, and the students, it's very objective-driven, but I don't necessarily see that drive that comes from staff to push our kids to be the, a better version. And not to say that it doesn't exist, it's just, I don't see it as a parent. I've done a lot of work with my student, particularly from index cards to getting her, her grades up and getting involved, so not just being critical, but actually doing the work with my child, and trying to figure out what her, her pitfalls are in her education, what areas are, is she missing, what's her struggle points. I, I find that, from what I'm seeing, is a lack of communication, and this is just coming from a parent, a lack of communication between a child from the, from a quarter, when the child is struggling, where's, where's the reach out from the teacher? Early enough so that there can be intervention from home. You know, I'm not putting more on the teachers, but from home, so that a parent like myself can motivate, and we are on the same page. And if I email, or if I do, you know, send, send multiple emails, I don't want it to be taken as adversarial, I'd like for someone to understand that I'm involved, and I'm on the same page with you, and I want to echo what you're saying in school, I want to echo at home. And I would like to see maybe more training with our, our teachers, my daughter is Monhegan. I'd like to see more training with teachers, giving the right kind of motivation to actually inspire our students of today, because our students are 13, 12, 11. What inspires us as adults doesn't necessarily inspire our kids within these age groups. So I would like to see that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else like to address the, the board? We have a second opportunity coming shortly. So our superintendent is going to, is going to be coming soon, shortly. In fact, he'll be coming in just a minute. Any letters? No letters? So our superintendent is coming right now. And he's going to address, he's going to address some of the things that, tonight, as well as we'll be dealing with our administrative portion of our budget tonight. So I'm going to turn you into the hands of Mr. Richard Del Maro, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board of Education, President Williams, community. I was asked to just give an update, so to speak, a second time this school term, to do where we are with our enrollments, and how it's affecting our facilities in regard to classroom space, programs, activities, et cetera. Some of the points that, first opportunity to address the board speaker indicated, I just want to address some of the things. It's against the law to deny entrance into the school if you are a resident of this school district. So that I can categorically say without any reservation that that would never take place. Now, perhaps the program that is required based upon the new enrollee may not be in one of our buildings, but is encompassing our responsibility to make sure that that child, regardless of their age and the school age range, would be, provided the appropriate educational experience necessary for success. The second point is that in looking at enrollment numbers and class sizes, there are no classes as we speak right now that have over 30 students in it. And the, one of the other points that the speaker mentioned about district lines to, that's a legislative type of responsibility. The school districts in itself cannot change the lines for districts, those are approved by the legislature of the state of New York, so that each school district- state of New York, uh, so that each school district, whether it's a union free district or a city school district, or a central school district, the three types of school districts in our state um are bound by those regulations and have to uh accept anyone that is a resident inside one of those districts. As far as, as I had mentioned earlier in the fall, when I was asked to talk about the enrollment, um, we are indeed one of the few districts, and it's a fortunate thing for us, in the Hudson Valley growing. All right. So that's been um a pressing issue for us administratively, as well as for you, as we've had many conversations regarding uh what are we doing about the proposed um growth of projects that are in our enlarged city school district. Now, we all know we have uh different, different uh entities, uh villages or towns or city that we encompass, obviously, and the enlarged city school district is entitled that way for that purpose. However, um, when we went to visit a little over a year ago now, about a year, about thirteen months ago, up to the state education department about growth in our school district and what would be the uh proper uh financial support aid, if you will, that would come in terms of what we were doing or thinking about doing in our school district to address the impending growth in our district. Part of the regulations in terms of the facilities department of the New York State Education Department indicates that they rely primarily as a contributing factor to the gr- uh birth rates inside a school district, the birth rates. So that lends us to what are we doing about that? How do we know that? Will we rely on a professional demographer to provide those statistical reports to us to see where we are? Because um, quite frankly, the demographer can only make those uh assumptions based on approved projects. Now, there are many developers or indicating that they have some sense of building in a particular area, so many units, high density, not density, single families, so on and so forth. But we have to go on what's approved project. So in our effort to respond to some of the questions that recently been asked about our growth, uh, we look very carefully at each one of our buildings, each one of our class sizes. Matter of fact, uh, we in preparing for this twenty twenty-one school year budget, uh, we've meeting with all of the department heads and principals about class sizes, whether or not uh we need additional teachers here and there and so forth uh throughout the whole school district. And uh so far, I, we have sat down with four out of the six principals already, talking about that, as we are beginning to develop, which will be the first portion of our budget presentations tonight, the administrative portion. Then there's the instructional, capital, revenue share, you know, revenue income, and then the public uh forums for public to respond to where we are in terms of um our budget that will go up eventually on Super Tuesday in May to the public. However, enrollment is a very key piece, and then, of course, as we increase our enrollment, what are we doing? In terms of uh, it was also mentioned by the speaker at the microphone this evening regarding the cafeteria. Uh, first of all, there will be a uh food preparation in the new facility, as we presented last year. Uh, certainly in the board office, there are all the, the large uh plaques regarding what the artist's rendering of those particular projects. And inside that, um, the purpose of uh creating an auxiliary um cafeteria, cafe, if you will, is to lessen the lines, as which we brought to the fact that why we wanted to do this was that we had long lines. If you remember, the superintendent went to visit the high school uh when this was first brought to our attention back in September of last year, and then quickly went with our architects to look at what could we do in the existing facility at the high school um as we continue to grow in that population. Now, the demographics clearly indicate that the bubble of our growth is in the upper elementary grades right now, fourth, fifth, through those two middle schools, six, seven, and eight, and certainly at the high school. This year, um, we are up about little less than a hundred students after all the adds and drops, all right? So that the fact of the matter at the high school, and therefore, when you have something like ninety-one additional students at the high school, over all the classrooms that we have, those were assumed into the class without overburden any one particular teacher. Now, it would be less than honest for me to say that all of the rooms have the equal amount of students in there. Of course, that varies from course necessary for student completion of a high school diploma, also in terms of electors, what's their preference, and so on and so forth. And there are times when students have to be closed out, because if you have thirty-five students, you're not going to have, you know, a class of thirty-five. So, you know, we try to keep the numbers anywhere between in grades three through twelve at twenty-five. That's not to say that all the classes are twenty-five. Some may be twenty-six, twenty-seven, some are twenty-two, twenty-one. That's an average. And then in the grades kindergarten through second grade, uh, we're looking at an average of eighteen students. So we use that as a guideline. I am not indicating that all our classrooms in K two have exactly eighteen students, and all of the classrooms have twenty-five in grades three through twelve. But these are the things we look at. Now, it was also asked of me, how can we accommodate when we may be moving toward capacity in any one of these facilities? And as we stand now, none of our building, based on the formulas from state education department, we're at building capacity. However, the fact of the matter is, in secondary schools, in particular at the high school uh in all the countries, even when I was a high school teacher, not everybody has their own classroom all day to themselves. All right? For example, at the high school right now, we have nine period day. A teacher's contract in the Middletown School District, like most school districts, have the teachers teaching five of those nine periods. Then they have a prepar- two preparation periods, a lunch period, and a duty period, and those are the nine periods. So that means if I was teaching in a particular classroom for five periods, spread out in the day, that means somewhere in the day, that room does not have students for four periods. And therefore, um, I use the word itinerant teacher, meaning that you might go into the rooms that don't have um a teacher teaching at that particular time, which accommodates all of the students in the particular at this time in a very comfortable manner, which the state looks at before they can say, hmm, Middletown, you're ready for a new building. Remember what I said a few minutes ago about a key contributing factor to that is live birth rates? Our live birth rates are holding steady and are decreasing from where they were several years ago, where we needed to build uh onto the high school as they moved up through. So our bubble is at the upper elementaries, we're accommodating. For example, there was also a question about Twin Towers, right? All of the students are being accommodated there, uh, and the fact that the matter is that we have added staff to these buildings to accommodate the needs of keeping our guidelines to where we want them to be. Each of the last three or four years in our budget presentations, we have added instructional staff, support staff, to meet and accommodate the needs of the students in the school district, and we will continue to do that. We have, uh, taking um very serious alert, a look at the particular growth of the districts. And so what I have done is I've reached out, we have reached out, my team has reached out to the um facilities in each of three areas, the Town of Walkhill, Town of Way Beyond, and the City of Middletown for approved projects. Right now, three projects have been approved in the Town of Walkhill, approved. I'm not saying that there's not more being discussed, but approved, all right? On Twin Towers Ridge, Distelberger, and Fanana. Now, each of those um are various in terms of the number of bedrooms. So how does the demographer determine how many uh students will projected to come out of these units? It's based on a formula that they use based on bedrooms in those particular units, right? So uh between those, uh, like Tower Ridge, we're, we're anticipating uh two bed, there are two bedrooms um units, twenty-eight students coming out of that, right? Distelberger, thirty-two students. Fanana, twenty-two students. So the Ta- the Town of Way Beyond on twenty-eight County Route Fifty, right? About forty students coming out of there. And then in the City of Middletown, there are three approved units that we are, uh, been informed about, Magnolia Park, seventy-five students, and Montgomery Place, five students. Now, um, we're waiting on the information on the two oh three, two thirty-one on Dulson Avenue. That is unknown at this particular time. From what I just presented, there's about two hundred and two students anticipated. These are not even built yet, so we're not even talking about next year or the year after, who knows how long before we actually see the students, because the unit, these are projections. These are assumptions based upon bedroom units, and therefore, you know, will they be sold immediately? It could be sold, we, you know, that type of thing. Even if they all showed up in September of twenty twenty, we would be able to accommodate over thirteen, right? We don't know what grade levels they are, but over thirteen grades from kindergarten to twelfth grade, we would be able to assume that without any difficulty of two hundred students. So um, I think it's very important for us to understand that we are diligently looking at this, if not daily, very, very frequently, and we're in contact with the towns as to what is being approved or not approved. Um, I have met with the, the new uh newly elected town supervisor, Town of Walkhill. He made an appointment, came in, and we talked about this, was a large part of our discussion among other topics. Um, so um, we have a very good relationship with each of these um entities, uh, keeping us abreast, and we are very much abreast of what's going on in terms of support by state aid. Now, it takes a good five years between concept and building a new school, right? And there's a lot of, great deal of um thought processes that go into that and a lot of work prior to students moving into a new building. So um, right now, our facilities can accommodate, uh, especially at the elementary level, because we have lost students in each of our three elementary schools. When I say lost students, I didn't mean we couldn't find them. What I'm talking about is the fact that there's less students in those buildings today than last year. For example, this one, this particular school has about one hundred students less today than they did last year, and that is the trend that's coming through. So you, we have to be very diligent not to overbuild, and then in five years, six years, we have empty rooms that I think even the speaker identified, where some school districts have expanded, and there's empty hallways of classrooms without students. Now, that's not going to prevent this school district, and I know the Board of Education looks at this very carefully, so that we are not behind the eight ball or making decisions too late to the fact. We're ahead of the curve in terms of keeping abreast of all of these issues. I can assure you of that. So um, tonight, uh, I would like to assure the community that uh there's a lot of discussion in communities, some based on facts, some based on not fact, and certainly some of the things we heard tonight was not, was not accurate in terms of being a student denied because we're over enrolled. I'll say it again, we are not permitted, nor do we uh have anyone denying enrollment in our school who is a bona fide resident of our school district. We're not permitted to do that, and I do not recall being in this district for many, many years ever that to occur. Now, people may misconstrue that when they come to enroll, and the program needs may not be in one of our facilities, but we are responsible for the placement and the support financially or instructionally to wherever that appropriate program may be. But they're still a student of ours, and they're still on our rolls as a student. I'll open the uh, the board for any questions regarding that. Um, yes, sir.
Mr. Del Maro, I do have a, I have three questions. Uh, you mentioned, and you've addressed this before previously, and we thank you for always giving thorough presentations of respect to the issues arising in our school district, um, that we've had uh over the last few years, a decline in the birth rates within the communities encompassed by the Middletown School District, but you also say now that it's holding steady. So I mean, could you just?
Well, steady at a decreased rate than what we were five and six and seven years ago, yes.
Have there been any signs that there might be an up, picking up?
No, we've had the demographer do a study about, I don't know, maybe twelve months ago, and as recently as in May again, right? And as recently as this week, looked back on all these projects that we're talking about, to see what um was any difference, if any, between May of this last school term, right, in twenty nineteen and uh today. So we are looking very carefully at this, uh, and on top of these approved projects.
Okay. Now, um, I know our, our district has been proactive, working with the realtors to attract uh more people to buy homes, because that will give us a higher tax base as opposed to a higher tax burden. Uh, do we know as far as the, the incoming new residents within our district, are we having more homeowners versus renters? Do you know, do we have any numbers on that?
No. Um, there, even though, for example, you just had a new unit open up, uh, just uh outside of East Main Street off our uh central office there, I think six or seven students came out of there. Now, whether or not those individuals purchased those units, or someone purchased them to rent them, remains to be seen. You know, we don't ask those questions, are you a renter or, or homeowner? What's the residence? Where are you living? We move from there. However, most of the growth is not happening in single family homes as far as these projects are concerned. Now, some of these units um are, are, you know, multiple uh, you know, units in terms of uh high density um housing, you know?
And you mentioned that uh i- it comes a time that if a district appears to be growing in population, then the state, not the district, but the state then gives the green light, correct me if I'm wrong.
You have to go up there and provide the evidence that uh you are going to build a school with state aid. If, if hypothetically, hypothetically speaking, if a school district is not interested in receiving any state aid, then that's up to the local community to vote on it. Um, but when school costs to build an elementary school and middle school or a high school, and we're talking about millions of dollars, you know, thirty-five, forty million, you know, if I recall, this particular facility that we're in now was close to sixty million dollars, and that was what, six years ago. So we're talking about a considerable amount of money, right, for a new building, and I don't bel- I, it would be my assumption that a school district today would not be able to financially afford, unless you're in a super, super rich school district, to build a facility without any state aid. In order to get state aid, you have to meet the requirements to receive state aid. And the first thing they look at is, do you need this facility? And that is based on live birth rates.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes.
Isn't that true?
Yes, we have a long range plan. As a matter of fact, the gentleman was here at the last board meeting talking about the condition of the school district and planning. As far as the Margaret, yes, as explained to you, that we um, we've had three more recent demography reports regarding that, keeping a close eye on the projections, uh, so that we're not behind the eight ball or too late to the party, so to speak, when uh you can't build a school and the students are not uh allowed to enter because there's no more room at the end. You can't, you just can't do it that way.
Dr. Johnson, when he was at the podium, talked about the uh dormitory authority and how tough it is to deal with them. The state education department, SED, is no easy, uh, not a, is not any easier. You stand in line up there, you can't just go up there and say, hey, I want a new building. You just don't do those things. Well, anybody's been watching this board over the past few years, or doing research, knows that we've been studying this, and we have been on top of this.
A- absolutely, to be true. Uh, we made the appointment, went up to see the new facilities director. Remember, um, state aid is very expensive, of course, it's commensurate with taxes, and everyone is concerned about higher taxes, and the fact that there are deficits, as you heard the governor talk about, I think about six billion dollar deficit uh that we need to wrestle with. Now, they have um appropriated a certain amount of money for new building projects, and they do provide with a very uh strict formula as to what receives state aid, and all different contributing factors. A special needs classroom gets more state aid than this, you know, administrative, doesn't get any state aid, so on and so forth. The primarily, state aid is primarily at the maximum based upon your constituency, your socio, your economic uh wealth in the district. All of those are factors into how much state aid you receive, and the fact of the matter is, do you need this facility? They They, um, you have to go there and really prove that you need this facility and what other means have you been taken in terms of building capacity at the present time when you're going up there to say, I need this because we're at max? And then they start asking you all the questions and you have to bring evidence about enrollment, class sizes and so on and so forth to demonstrate that. Because all of that information is sent up to the state, so they're looking at the reports that you sent up there, to the report that you bring up there, um, you know, later date. So, so I think- So yes, we do have a demographer looking at this, and yes, we do look at this periodically, not every five or six years. Like I mentioned, we had a demography report about 18 months ago, maybe 13, 14 months ago. We did one more recently in May, um, because we went up there with, uh, last December with that first, uh, demography report and our enrollments, um, of, um, students, you know, live in the building, so to speak, and then we, uh, asked again to update that just the last two weeks to see what, if any, major changes. Now, we watch that every, uh, every spring in terms of projection. When I, uh, mentioned earlier in the presentation that I have sat down with four of six, I'm meeting number five tomorrow, um, regarding that, and the last one, uh, Monday to go over the budget projections, we look at, let's say, who's in first grade, whatever that number is in that particular building, if there's 160 kids, they go up into second grade, and do we have enough teachers and so on and so forth? Do we move teachers with inside here or, or, uh, within the district depending on those needs? Same thing at the high school. We sat down already with Mrs. Sorrentino and went down to all of her needs and course requirements in terms of course electives and looked at what staff, uh, is necessary. So we compile all of that, and then we have to look at, um, our revenue streams, whether it's the revenue stream from taxes and the revenue stream from state, right? What's the budget going to look like in terms of increasing the budget? That's why we see every year it goes up a little bit, so because of not only the contracts that we have inside our school district, but all because of increasing, as a result of additional staff across the whole district, where are the needs necessary? So, um, last year we came to the public who voted, um, in a very high rate in favor of our school budget with only a 1% tax levy increase. That was last year. I, I'm not saying that that, you know, may not be in the same vicinity this year, please don't read in between the lines.
Yeah, yeah, it might, might not be the same.
But, um, obviously it would be premature to say this at this time, when tonight's the first night of the presentations over the next couple of board meetings, be very premature.
So I think it's, I think it's fair, it's fair to, it's fair to say, um, and, and I, you know, and I appreciate the speaker, the speaker, because I, I've always said this, is that if you don't know, you ask. And, and I think that's, that's really important, um, and, and we, we try to be in this district as open, as opened as possible. Uh, so I think it's fair, I think it's fair to say, um, fair to say that we've tried to, we, we're trying to, and we always have been, ahead of the curve. Uh, but I, I, what I recognize is, is that, um, a lot of people, when they move into this area, um, especially coming out of New York City, um, sometimes there's a little divide in the way that New York City operates as a district as opposed to way upstate districts have to operate, and that there's a lot of, a lot of obstacles that we have to face just with bureaucracy and, uh, you know, and red tape and things of that, but we're doing the, we're do-, we're, we're moving ahead, we're looking at it, we're not, we're not shutting a blind eye, and I, and I want to applaud you, you and, and the administrative, uh, team-
Thank you.
-for, for always, for always being proactive in these, especially in these areas. So we're, we're addressing it, so I want to assure, um, those that was on social media, and I don't normally respond to a lot of things on social media, but those that were on social media that were asking the questions, I want to assure them, and this is why we had you speak, assure them that, um, we're not shutting a blind eye and that we are working and that if there's any questions that, we're here to-
Yeah, we've been very transparent about this. Obviously, uh, among the fiduciary responsibilities bestowed on us, uh, keeping, um, a reasonable budget, uh, so that we can maintain the high quality of the programs that we do have, uh, but we're always looking to grow and build upon. I, you know, I heard the other speaker talk about some of the programs, instructional programs. Believe me, I can go on for a long period of time about programs, um, uh, so that, that's a very, very dear passion of mine-
Yes, it is.
-about what classrooms look like. I do not want, nor do I expect our classrooms to look like my grandfather's classroom. I think that was what was, one was being alluded to in terms of task-oriented. Certainly there are time for task, but that's not what we're, you know, talking about. I think that Mr. Cressenza talked about robots, right? Uh, I was not in a classroom setting where I was given the ability to think beyond just algorithms of math, but to build with my hands in a tactile setting, uh, what, what a robot could do for, I say, society that would help, you know, ease someone's pain or be more conducive to something more pleasurable, uh, so that, uh, some mechanical and so on and so forth. These are experiences that our students have. Now, um, we're working with our instructional leader with STEM, for example, that's just one piece not alone, to bring down these things into the elementary program. But I'm a firm believer that we just don't shoot out a whole type of program and to see if, you know, what sticks, doesn't stick, you know? So we try to do, build upon our successes, and it's really going like gangbusters because now we're going to have probably at the next board meeting, a, a formalized club at the high school. I know it's in the middle school already, and it's just a matter of time we get into the elementary school with these type of things. But it's more than just robotics club. I, I'm not just saying that, you know, I understand exactly what the speaker was talking about, and I think maybe, um, our assistant superintendent at the next meeting can talk about some of the motivational, some of the tactile, some of the, um, creative project-based type of learning experiences we can, uh, demonstrate to the public, because I can understand that parents may not understand what's going on. And certainly we look to the parents' feedback, uh, guardians' feedback as to improve upon our programs. If we shut, uh, an eye to what's out there to motivate all of the students, that is our main objective. What is going to engage all of the students, because some are auditory learners, some are, you know, visual learners, some are tactile, some are kinesthetic type of learners. And all of those activities, no one says that you're only tactile touch, kinesthetic movement or auditory. It's a combination of all how we learn. Yet we may have a preference or we have a propensity for one more zone than another, certainly, but that doesn't mean that the other learning styles are shut out. It's a very eclectic approach to learning. It depends on intri-, I mean, all right, I, I can go on for hours with this, and that's-
It's your passion.
You know, my, yes, it is my passion. Um, and, um, you know, we do have a very dedicated teaching staff, and I'm not saying that because I'm the superintendent of the schools, but it's the reality. But does that mean that we sat pat on where we are? Absolutely not. An organization, including this edu-, educational institution, if we're not moving forward, we're moving backwards because the times are changing, and we have to change to prepare students for what's beyond. When we talk about lifelong learners, what does that exactly mean? It means providing the skills that adapt. I can't even talk about what may be a job five years from now, because five years ago, we didn't even know what the jobs are for today. So the fact is that we provide professional development, we're constantly trying to be in a, we go to these conferences not for mini vacations, to learn what's on the cutting edge so that this district continues to be the state of art inside this school district. With our population and our demographics, right, um, we are at or above the levels of state averages in terms of, uh, academic performance. Does that mean that we're happy with that? Absolutely not. Categorically, I can say with 100% certainty, we're always looking out for different programs. I was looking at a different program today, this morning, about our E and L bilingual students, what would be best for them. We're bringing consultants in here next week to talk about those program improvements with our existing staff to help them, right? Right now, we have 28 different languages in our, 28 different languages in our school district. So how can we say we're only going to help only the preponderance of language in one and dismiss someone who's not that? No. How do you grow? You have to keep learning every day, and we do that. And to make our students feel successful at the end of day, when they walk into our buildings, we want to see them greeted with respect and anxious to get into those classrooms, and the same thing when they leave. And if we're not, we're constantly looking at how to better improve upon that. What, how can we build our existing programs to do that, including a safe environment? You can't learn, uh, when you have students sitting on the edges of, of the sill. That's not a learning environment. So the growth is very, very important. You know, there's, there's three pillars, really, if you think about it. It's your academics, your instructional programs, your extracurricular activities, and your athletics. All of those are like a three-pronged stool, and then in the middle of that stool is home and school connections. And then when you have all of that, meeting students' needs, parents, understanding what's going on in terms of instruction and that two-way communication, then you have the solid district that we have here in district. Now, is that 100% all the time? Of course not. But that doesn't mean that we don't improve and correct the ways in which we need to, and we do that every year in this room here in our budget, projecting out what programs we need. Any other questions? Yes?
One more. The, within the next, uh, few months, we're going to see a big move towards the census, US, United States Census. Uh, what role do you see the Census playing with respect to the projections our district has so far going to the future? I know the district put forward, or superintendent, like a three-year, five-year plan to address academic, uh, objectives and goals.
Well, certainly when the State Education Department, uh, puts forth out a new focus, it's called Next Generation. Uh, so we are, uh, prepared for the mandate by the State Education Department to implement the Next Generation standards in New York State for September 2020. However, three years ago, they alerted us that they were moving in this direction and expecting school districts, and I'll only speak for the large city school, uh, district of Middletown, uh, how we prepared our staff, our programs, our scope and sequences, our assessments to those scope and sequences in preparing for that. We are right on the cutting edge of having our staff prepared for that. It will continue, I'm not saying we're, we completed all of, uh, our, our, how should I say, areas that we need to have ready, but we will have them by September, and that we will continue. We have and will continue to provide professional development, whether or not we become turnkey, which means that we'll present that to the staff or send our staff to, uh, different, uh, areas in which we're going to present, uh, to them how to best implement that through a wide variety of activities so that we're meeting the standards, uh, that are putting foot both as it changes over the last couple of years. So our district is working very closely with our demographer, who's working closely with the censuses, again, it all goes back together. But it goes back to, again, the, the live birth rates, and the concern that we're having in our school district is, the phenomena is that we have, as we increase, say, Richard, how are we increasing our enrollments, and you're telling me that there's, um, stagnation or decline in the birth rates? What's happened is people moving into our district, uh, are not born here, uh, but are entering our school district. But what's happening is the decline at the elementary is accommodating all of these areas, and both our middle schools who have an increased enrollment, right now that they have class sizes that are appropriate, uh, for the number of classrooms, and again, adding staff so that at those secondary schools, both middle schools and the high school have rooms when teachers are not teaching, that we can move a, a new teacher in to accommodate class sizes if they're increasing. And then when we get to the point where, uh, we're reaching that capacity, right, then, you know, prior to the last minute, we'll go back up to the state, and we're watching the demography, uh, changes, uh, you know, monthly to see what, if anything, we can do about increasing our facilities.
Thank you, and, and I think it's fair to say that if we, if we were to have a trend of young couples moving in, whether it's renters or even buyers into the homes, we may see again, hopefully, a-
A resurgence.
Future surge in babies.
Yes.
A birth trend.
Again, um, obviously, um, it is to our advantage to have a very, very large, robust enrollment, because the more, um, individuals, students you have in, in a school district, then you could offer many more different types of programs. It's very difficult when you have a very small school to have, let's say, a high school that only has 90 students graduating, right, and you have maybe 300 students in there. Very difficult to provide all of the plethora, um, opportunities that we offer because of the size of our school district, uh, and that the, um, the increased enrollments really, really, um, mandates more teachers. More teachers means you can offer more flexibility in programming. For example, at the high school, we now have, um, you know, almost 113 college credits. You know, three, four years ago, we didn't have that, right? But that requires more staff, uh, more opportunity for electors for our staff. We also said we're about 375 students to our, our Orange Osso Bosse's programs for technical learning, you know, plumbing, electrician, auto mechanics, cosmetology, culinary, so on and so forth, masonry. So students, law enforcement, uh, nursing, pre-nursing courses, and so on and so forth, in addition to the, uh, STEM activities we have at the high school, and the same thing is going on at the middle schools, uh, in terms of getting prepared for those transitions into high school. Our high school sits now about 2,350 students. We anticipate another probably 50, 60 different students next year, so we'll be tipping maybe 24, 25, you know, 24, 25 hundred students, and then the following year, the projection, which our demographer's been right on target, 2,500 students. Uh, so that the additions that we're making now to convert our current media center into a cafe, hopefully we'll be able to get that, uh, probably in October of 2020, somewhere around Halloween time. I know I don't want to get, uh, quoted here, but somewhere between Halloween and Thanksgiving would be the opening of that, and then the following latter part of the spring, the new, new media center, uh, so that we're accommodating, A, a state-of-the-art media center with a television production, another type of program that is not task-oriented but performance-oriented in terms of all of what goes on to television and robotic cameras and traditional cameras in there, that's going to be built inside on the lower level of that new facility. So we're looking forward to advancing, uh, and preparing our students for 21st century careers.
Thank you, thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you. All right. My second report is now not with me, but Mr. Tuttle, talking about the administrative component to our 2021 school year budget. Mr. Tuttle?
Hello, good evening, everyone. I'm president of the board, which he stepped out, board members, Mr. Delmore, superintendent. Uh, tonight begins our series of, uh, multiple nights where we discuss our budget for the 2020-21 school year. So we're already into, um, basically for July 1 is what we're looking to get this budget for. Um, just a couple of things, um, is, as you'll see, we have basically four major, three major components of the, uh, budget that we have to report to the, uh, community. One is administrative, one is instructional, and one is capital. Uh, the other, um, when we do that reporting, we actually include benefits with those, and we'll have a revenue discussion. Although those aren't mandated by the state, we, we separate them, so we have a better conversation about them. Uh, you can see our calendar, um, what we have coming up, um, so there's the next four meetings, um, will be a lot of information, um, and anything I present tonight will be on our website. It'll also be recorded on the MIDI TV, and you can also go back and look at that as well. It's hard to believe, though, this is my fourth year doing the budget already. Um, yeah, it's going fast. Um, so just a little bit about the budget, I mean, as far as the district is concerned, uh, right now we're operating at over a $200 million budget with grants and everything, although the general fund is 195 million, with grants and stuff, we're over, well over $200 million, so. Our staff does a good job managing- So our staff does a good job managing all of that. As the superintendent said a little bit before in his previous report, we started these meetings back in December, meeting with building principals, meeting with directors, getting their input on requests. And then we met with the superintendent and the staff this week to go over their final requirements of what we would like to propose to the board over the next few board meetings. Some of the things that are included in these process are, you know, like the building principal will go through and say that this is, this is in need of repair, you know, we need some, look at the pavement out here. And we just go through all these items just to try to get them listed, and we prioritize based on the need. And is it a capital project? Is it something we could take care of now? And we work with, you know, multiple people to get that to work. Superintendent also alluded to last year, we were at a 1%, 1% tax levy increase to the community. So that was pretty impressive for us. So a couple of other things to, for our assumptions of budgeting. One is the CPI, the Consumer Price Index. Usually for most items, it's right around 2%. It's been fluctuating a little bit around there. The tax cap growth, which is what they call the 2%, the 2% tax cap, we can only increase by 1.81% this year. That's for every district. So the comptroller has mandated that for each school district. They cannot go higher than 1.81%. The TRS is estimated at 9.53%. It is just estimated. And the reason why we say estimated, because it depends on how much, how many staff that we have in the district, based on their tiers in the system and things like that. So depends on what tier you're on, the, the rate could fluctuate a little bit for how much we owe them. Go ahead, Finn. Yep. Yeah, I had, actually, that's a good point. Thank you. No, it's good. TRS is the Teacher Retirement System. So the, each employee contributes for a certain amount of years, and then the district is responsible for the other remaining portion of the retirement system funding. And that's the same for the ERS, which is the Employee Retirement System. That's more of the custodial, the clerical, anyone that's not really not in the teacher ranks or admin ranks. Bosse Services, we estimate about 5%. And that's all contractual increases, just like we have contractual for employees and all those types of services. Some other things, something really, really exciting for us this year is the Health Insurance Reserve. That was approved back in the fall, and we were able to secure $5 million for that reserve. The reason why that's important for us is because now that we're self-funded, if we ever had a catastrophic year, we have some money to help pay those medical bills, and we wouldn't have to go into other reserves or other general fund accounts. The other big note for us, since we've gone self-funded, the premiums have been unchanged for two and a half years. Hopefully, through this budget cycle, we can get to three years. But as everyone knows, the cost of medical expenses keep rising. So we're getting some, our consultants looking at some numbers for us this year. So the thing for us, the foundation aid increase this year is 5.01%. Although the figures came out, the, the state has done something different with the foundation aid. They've included 10 of the specific categories into one aid. It's called foundation aid now. So we used to have like library aid, computer aid, things like that. It's all in one bundle now. Right? So you have to go in and try to fuse out how much is for what category in there. So when you look at foundation aid, the last, the 10 categories from last year to this year, it's a little over 5%. If you look at the overall aid for us, it was about 4%. And if you took out our building incentive and our capital project aid, it was a little less than 4%. So our community schools continues to increase, which is great for us. That's almost 18% increase in funding this year. We're at, right around $2.4 million. When we, when we first started, we were at 1.6 million. So it's, it's increased significantly for us. And that's really for a lot of our social, emotional needs, our crisis, health-related things. And we use a lot of it for our after-school academics, so for a lot of intervention at the high school, things like that, so making sure kids are on target. Just a real quick snapshot of what this administrative piece is. It's really about 7% of the entire budget. It's really the smaller portion of it. And as the name alludes to, it's really about administration. So it's all about the superintendent salaries, all the district administrator salaries, the finance office, personnel, things like that. Our insurance. So here's a list of all the items that are under there. And this year, I spoke to the board a little bit about the new layout of the, the reporting that you'll see the budget laid out in, in the other packet that you have. These, and I just summarized it and this for display only here. And once, once again, all this information will be on our website, so you can review it tomorrow. On the left-hand column was adopted budget last year. And then this, in the middle column, is the proposed budget. And I want to emphasize the word proposed, right? So we're starting early February here, looking at a budget. And we go off our state aid runs that happened in January. So over the time, things change, needs change, and we'll, we keep adjusting some of these needs and these account codes as we keep moving forward. So it's important to say, to note that this is the proposed for the administrative. In my fourth year, it's never been the same budget as we've adopted. So that's important to keep in mind. So this year, with this proposed, $702,000 increase over last year. And most of it is primarily contractual with the salaries. We do have a little bit of a Bosse's increase because we're putting more services through Bosse's. So the benefit of that is we get aid back on that service. So instead of us purchasing it through the general fund and getting no aid, we go to Bosse's and we receive some money back for that service. So we're trying to push a lot of things to that, that service through Bosse's. So overall, with this budget, right now, we're about 5.04% increase over last year. Again, this may, could or may not change, or could remain the same, based on when the state passes their budget April 1st, right? We get more aid, we get less aid. Historically, since I've been doing this, we've received more aid. So then we're able to put more of the requirements or the recommendations that we need to move the district. As the superintendent was talking a little bit before, you know, we're seeing a lot of increase in enrollment in certain areas. Obviously, that's going to require some more staffing to help manage that. Probably in the next meeting, I will look at more service requests or additional FTEs that we need, and then we need to look at the budgeting for all of that. So, right, historically, we're kind of remaining kind of the same over the past five years, right around the 5% mark, just a little bit below 5%. And again, this is mostly contractual, so there's not much we can do. Most of the bargaining units have their contracts, and it's approved. Those are the salaries and things that we need to adhere to. So just a real quick, our budget calendar. Next meeting is instructional. Couple of things that we really want to look at is, when is Super Tuesday? That's May 19th. And then also, the budget adoption by the board is on April 16th. And then there's a budget hearing, and then the budget vote, an election vote is May 19th. Also, if you're looking to register voting, please contact the district clerk at 845-326-1196. She'll be more than glad to help you get registered to vote. It's very important for our community. So that's about, that's it for that. Any questions? Okay.
Within the numbers you showed us today, unless I might have missed it, where did the security fall?
That will not be in this. The security will be in the capital.
On the capital.
You're talking about SROs and things like that?
Yes.
Yes. So that'll be two meetings from now.
Okay. With respect to the budget numbers you gave us today, do we have an idea? And where would, what percentage of our expenditures goes towards unfunded mandates from the state?
Oh, from in there?
Well, you can bring the answer the next time. But I think that's important.
Not many in that, not many in the administrative one.
Okay.
A lot of them are mostly instructional. So the next meeting will have a lot of those. And I can give you a kind of a breakout of what those are. So speaking of unfunded mandates, one of the things that we're going to have to look at is the new state mandate for a data privacy officer. They call it a DPO. I think Paula, you emailed me about that. So that's something that the state is mandating each district have. So that's really an unfunded mandate. So it's another employee, high-level employee that manages all your data privacy and things like that.
And then you mentioned those 10 categories, and that wasn't in the news recently, where the governor now has grouped them into one
Yeah.
On the, the foundation aid.
Right.
Will that, the, based on your review, that will result in more cost for the district? Or will long-term?
No, I think they're taking the same formulas that we had, based on allocation and student enrollment. And then they're just putting, they're just lumping it into one number instead of giving you 10 different categories. So inside of there is state aid for software, state aid for hardware, which is computers, Bosse's, and there's, you know, some of the other ones we don't receive in there, but there's, you know, those are the ones that were, you know, when we used to do the revenue, we'd have them all listed out. So we'll just have them listed as foundation aid.
And I think one of the concerns that I, that I read about was that when it came to state aid for construction projects, capital improvement projects, that the, the state was shifting more the burden to districts. Is that something you see happening?
Yeah, they just put some new legislation in, getting certain projects approved in a certain amount of time, and also not providing as much state aid as you normally received in the past.
So the burden is shifting?
Yeah, the burden's going to shift a little bit. You know, it's, it's funny because they have a new director up there who's very tough on approving things. And it's been frustrating for folks trying, you know, architects and people who are accustomed to getting things approved. And I, and I'm, in my mind, I'm like, she's doing the right job. She's been directed to say, slow the projects down, slow the money down, right? Because they don't want to give all the money away. So now they put legislation in place to slow the money down. So it may be more challenging for districts to build infrastructure.
Do you see that affecting any current projects that we have in place right now?
No, we should be okay now. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have, Paula, you want to?
On the health insurance, how long do we have? What's the timeframe to put $5 million in that reserve fund?
We were fortunate enough to have already done that. So last, remember, in June, we had, we had a resolution, actually, two years ago, because we had started the process with the Senate and Assembly two years ago, to saying, once it was passed, we would allocate the $5 million to that reserve.
Good. Do you have any idea how much we've saved by going self-funded at this point?
Off the top of my head, probably five to six million dollars.
Phew. Nice. Thank you. I have a, where are they now? I've got a question about, on the five-year history administrative budget. What, what do these percentages represent? Like
Year to year. So in other words, that, every year, that's what the increase was from the previous year. So the administrative budget went up that much from the previous year.
So it went up, oh, what's wrong with my math?
Yeah.
Like 0.10% from last year to this year?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And some of the things that we do is we look at, you know, historically, I'll take two or maybe three, two years of data and saying, are we using money out of this account code? What are we using it for? And then you'll see some reductions on those, and like, you don't necessarily need that much funding in that. So that's why we try to offset the salary increases.
So at this moment, the health insurance plan is healthy?
Healthy right now. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Paula?
The whole plan is healthy. Should all of our employees be? Can you speak to, on, on, just right above that, just the line by line? Can you speak to some of the savings, some of those negative numbers with some of those savings are coming in? On the chief school administration, negative 11,000, tax numbers that are going down. There's supervision, special ed, schools.
Right, yeah. So a lot of those, when we look at this, when you're looking at the chief administrative officer, we looked at the service contracts over the past couple of years. We didn't use what was budgeted to the fullest, so we just lowered those amounts down a little bit. So that whole budget line is, is lower for the chief administrator. The tax collector, looking at two years.
Because that's all expenses related to
Yes, that's not a salary.
Right.
Okay.
I know that. That's why I'm asking the question.
He would like that, but that's not a salary.
Well, that's why I'm asking the question. You talk to the savings.
There's travel, there's professional consultants, there's supplies, there's other things inside of that.
So what we budgeted for previously
Right.
We weren't using, and so now we're seeing a reduction. Thank you.
Right. And that, that's usually all the lines when you see a reduction in something. So we're, we've gone through, I go through one or two years of history, and then we just try to, you know, pare it down a little bit.
Thank you.
Mike, I have several questions. Maybe the new
Okay.
Program is, but I will email them to you.
Okay.
And then all board members can see it. And I'll just give you an example in the very first column, 1010, Bosse Services to the board.
Right. So we use
What is
We use the board docs. So we purchased the, through Bosse's.
See, questions like that.
Yeah.
So it's, I couldn't figure out what we did for that kind of money.
Yeah.
All right. I had like one, two, three, four.
We also, so, yeah, so we also
No, no, not, oh, six, seven.
We also use the election management services through Bosse's. So a lot of the Bosse's that you see under
Right.
Board or district clerk or board meetings, it's all related to the software that we use to run.
Okay.
Either elections or the board docs or whatever.
Most all of them were an increase, not a significant increase. But more curiosity to what happened. Though, I'm curious on one, two, three, four, 1240, if we go down to the second line, that little, all those little asterisks in that?
Yeah, that's, that's because we had a zero last year. Right? So there's nothing, so what happened, when we went to the new system, we were, last year, we didn't have it as separated as travel. So this year, it's coming as travel, and that's how we, so it's, it's just coming. I didn't know how to handle the
You know me, curiosity. I, you know. So I'll just email, and I'll email all the board.
Okay. So to go back, just so, I think the insurance line on here is not what our health insurance is. This is for all the district insurance. So we, you know, for our buildings and our, for casualties and things like that, liabilities insurance, yeah. Cybersecurity insurance. So there's a lot of things that are inside the insurance. So our health insurance, which we'll have in two meetings, is like 18 million dollars. It'd be good if it was 850. Got, Pastor, or, Mr. Prino, do you have any?
Mr. Prino, you have any questions?
No, as usual, I'll look this over and
Okay.
And I will look
Look it over very carefully
Yeah.
And get back to you, as I've done in previous years. And with me, it's always a bottom line, after we go through all the various components, how much levy is on the taxpayers.
Right. The one thing about the new format, if you have any suggestions or you're not, something doesn't read correctly, please email me, and so we can see if we can, you know, make it right. Because if, if you don't understand it, then, you know, people in the community may not understand it as well.
I know you spent a lot of time on this, and you mentioned we start very early
Right.
On the budget each year.
Thank you very much.
Pastor, do you have any question?
So I, I don't, they already asked some of the questions that I have. I have a few more, but what I'll do is I'm going to, I'm going to go through everything.
Okay.
And I'll email you, email you, so that we can have a discussion, we can have a discussion about it later.
Right.
But again, Mr. Prino said, I know that we start real early, and, and you, you've been working real hard on this, so thank you. I think we're going to, I think, you know, if everything goes well, when state aid runs come out, we'll, we'll, we'll be successful again. I don't know how much longer we can count on that, but we'll take it while we can get it.
Take it while you get it, and just make sure everyone keeps gambling at the lot, at the casinos, and it'll be good.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Any other question?
Thank you, sir.
All right. You're welcome.
I'd just like to add, on the superintendent's report, and I know that we wanted to get to the administrative portion of the budget presentation, but this past week, at the Middletown High School, we have instituted, implemented, if you will, a, an ID system for all of the students to get into, not the school, but into the cafeteria at the appropriate time, and also to be in all their classes at the appropriate time. So we have instituted a system in which each student with a photograph on it passes a kiosk as they enter into the cafeteria. And it's a quick, quick, it takes about a nanosecond, they just put it on there, and if, in fact, because the student schedules uploaded into the kiosk, they put the ID They put the, uh, ID badge right to the, to little, uh, blue light. And boom, it pops up green, that means you're supposed to be in there, and if it doesn't, turns out red, that means you're not supposed to be there. And the reason I bring this up, because we went into this so that, why was some of the lunch periods overcrowded last year or the years in the past? Because there were some students that stayed in there, all right, when they weren't supposed to, or entered in there when they weren't supposed to. So that now this week, there have been comments by the cafeteria staff, the administrators, the teachers in there. Gee, the lunch room seems to be not as crowded as in previous. Why? Because as they, um, quickly find out, our very intelligent student body. That they need to be in the place where they are to be, because there are some individuals love the socialization. I mean, they are teenagers. But what's our paramount responsibility to make them sure where they're supposed to be? And if they, they do have a, everybody has a lunch period, uh, those who don't have a lunch period because they elect to make more courses in there. They're given lunch passes to bring their food back to the classroom, so on and so on. So everyone has an opportunity to eat lunch. Um, and the fact that we want our rooms to be appropriately housed. So that, uh, there is the ample space provided for them, and not because people are in there, uh, that not supposed to be in there. So that's really working very well, uh, for those who may forget their pass, they are then, um. Asked to go back to their house to get a pass, they check their name, they get the thing, okay, you're supposed to have lunch period, fifth period. They go back and they get the paper, uh, back. So I think, um, I was there two or three times this week. Uh, with Pastor Williams, one of the lunch periods, uh, whereby the students came in, there was only probably, nah, maybe three hundred and fifty kids coming into lunch period. Only five or six of them were trying to, how should I say, uh, challenge the system. And the fact of the matter that, uh, obviously, uh, they were not allowed to get in there and sent to where they were supposed to be. Also, as we move forward with this program, I'm very pleased to announce that it has, uh, several functionalities. Whereby now teachers on hall duty, as we move into next week and the week after, will have that. So that if students are walking around, uh, they come up and say, where are you? Uh, and pass, uh, their name or the pass that they on the lanyard, uh, show on there, we'll be able to see where they're supposed to be. So if they have, uh, let's say in six periods, supposed to be in room two oh three, they shouldn't be in, on the third floor. Or the ground level floor, or so on and so forth. So, um, this is going to help, I'm not gonna say eliminate. Uh, the age-old problem in secondary schools of students not being where they're supposed to be, uh, more formally known as cutting class. Uh, but the fact is that this is curtailing that, uh, and it's working very, very well. Uh, teachers who are assigned to lunch duty are very pleased about it, certainly everyone so far. So, and the students. I tell you, like anything else, adapt very well. Uh, they understand, uh, what this is about, and it's not a hassle. And it hasn't, uh, elongated the lines or really, um, procrastinated any, uh, time that they need to get, get, to get a lunch. Uh, whether it's something cold or hot, whatever they prefer. So, um, it's working very, very well. I really gotta commend the high school staff, the entire staff there, as well as our tech staff, you know, Vesh out there, uh, has been an instrumental part, so thank you.
Thank you, Vesh.
Uh, for working with, um, Mrs. Sorrentino and the other administrators, uh, all of them there, working very collaboratively. And cohesively together, as long as with the teaching staff there. Um, I, I, I have not heard any, I've observed it. More than, at different times during lunch period, uh, because some lunch periods are more heavily, um, involved, especially our fifth period lunch. Because that's the BOSIs. We have the morning BOSI's program coming to eat lunch in the fifth period, then we have the afternoon BOSI's going to eat lunch period. So they get on those buses to go back to BOSI's to get their program needs. Uh, and I went there particularly in, in lunch period five. And I'm telling you, it just moved very smoothly. So, um, parents, guardians out there, if you wonder what's going on. Uh, that's exactly what's going on there, and, uh, it's working very well, and it has not caused any disturbance of great, um, significance. So I want to thank everyone for cooperation, uh, and, uh, appreciate it. Makes a better program.
I, I'll co-sign, I, I will co-sign with the superintendent on that. I had the opportunity to, I think I was there. Several, several lunch periods. I even stayed a little bit longer that first day, uh, and, uh, very impressed. Not many complaints at all from, from the students. You, you know, you always have a few when something new comes along. But for the most part of them, one of them said, I'm not gonna lie, this is really cool. And so, uh, you know, it, it went very smooth. Uh, Vesh, again, thank you. Thank you for, uh, working with, with Mrs. Sorrentino and the high school team and, and getting that up and running. There's still, you know. Everyone's getting used to it and getting, working the kinks out, but I think it's gonna be positive. And so, uh, as, as always, we keep moving forward. Let's move on. Let's move on. Uh, we've been here, we've been, we've been here a minute. Uh, action items. Action items. Um, oh, let me, let me say, thank you for, thank you for the superintendent's report, um, uh, Mr. Del Maro. And, and, uh, Mr. Tuttle, thank you so much. Uh, action items. Need a, um, uh, motion for approval of financial memorandum sixteen.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So passes. Uh, approval of special service memorandum number fifteen.
So move, second.
Moved in second, did any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So passes. Approval of change orders.
So move, second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? In fact, um, Tom, Tom, can you just wanna give us a quick?
I have one.
Uh, good evening. There's one change order before you this evening, uh, was reviewed by the change order committee. Uh, and that is, um, for the Twin Towers Masonry Restoration Project. Um, the specifications did not anticipate, um, having an engineer certify all the scaffolding that's going up there for safety. And so we have, uh, required that the contractor engage an independent engineer to review all that scaffolding. And certify its safety, uh, for the duration of that work. And that's, uh, five thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. And that's the only change order.
Thank you, sir. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? So passes. Uh, before we go on, I just wanna, I, I wanna, uh, uh, make sure again, I say. That, uh, we don't just rubber stamp any of this, this information, most of this information, uh, we get. And it's uploaded to board docs, which is where we view most of our, most of our work. It's uploaded on Friday. We have the opportunity to be able to review, um, all of the things that we have to deal with and ask questions of the administration. So, um, we're not just running through it, we've had an opportunity to review it, and, and it's also available for you to be able to look at as well. So I just want you to, I want you to know that. Um, uh, moving on, uh, to action item D. Approval of award of bids for district-wide AC project.
So move.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? So passes. Uh, action item E, approval, I need a motion for the approval of special education plan. Uh, nine, um, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Moved in seconded, Mrs. Tobias and, and, and Mr. Gomez. Uh, moved in seconded, any, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? So passes.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion that we remove item F from the agenda.
Can I go a little further with that? If, uh, I know this is important and it needs to be done. Um, we looked at the stipulation and we have a couple of questions. We didn't see it, uh, this particular thing until now. So if we could go into a very, very brief executive session and just talk about this and, um, come back and vote on it.
Talk about.
We'll have to go into executive session to do that.
So, so, can we?
We can do everything.
We have a first thing.
Okay, so can I, can I, can I get a, a motion for, um, to, a, a motion to go into a quick exec session? And, uh, at which point we'll come right back out into, uh, resume our public session. Can I get a motion for that?
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor? All in favor? Aye. Are we in favor? I'm not hearing nobody. I didn't, that's, okay. Ayes, ayes, the ayes. I'm, 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 I'm an, I'm an aye. So, so we've got four. We've got four. Do we need? We need five. We need, we need five.
I'll do a roll call.
Do a roll call, please.
Aye. Mr. Presidento?
Aye.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Mr. Prino?
Aye.
Mr. Dyson?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Ayes have it, no opposed. Uh, you excuse us, we're just gonna step into a, into a quick exec session. We'll be coming right back out to resume. Uh, if you desire to stay, you can stay. If not, uh, have a wonderful night. And our next meeting will be on February twentieth. Thank you for your patience. Uh, we've come back out of exec session and we are now back in public session. Um, thank you for your patience. I know that the hour is late, uh, but we're, we're gonna move forward. So I need, excuse me, again, approval of, uh, stipulation of agreement. As, as presented, as presented, um, originally, I need a motion for that. Moved in seconded, all in favor? Anything invited by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Ayes have it. Ayes have it, so passes, so passes. Uh, moving on real, moving on real quick, our second opportunity to address the board. Anybody that would like to address the board, you can come at this time. Again, same, same, same rules apply as before. We don't have the signs, we don't have the signs tonight. We don't have the signs tonight, but, um, Mrs. Blum and I will raise your hand and let you know when you have a minute left and then thirty seconds.
Perfect.
Okay, so, two things.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, good evening again. So the superintendent had made mention that he, there's no distinction between people who rent. Versus people who are homeowners. I am a homeowner. I pay taxes, gladly pay taxes. Um, my question is, who's updating, uh, who's, the, who's updating the social media? Or, or the medias that are uploading our district statistics for people who are coming to purchase homes? If you look right now on some of the renters.com, when you look up listings to purchase homes in Middletown, it gives us a four out of ten rating. So why would anyone wanna come to this district? It doesn't give a true representation.
To that point, uh, we invited and had approximately fifty-five realtors in here. Uh, to see the high school program, uh, because that was their interest in terms of promoting the school district. There's many contributing factors to those, um, uh, how should I say, surveys that they ask. Uh, and get a low rating, because some of the, the particular realtors were talking about that. Uh, but we presented a placard to them, I think we have it uploaded, about all of the positive things we have in our school district. One of which I mentioned about the free college credit programs and things of that nature, but also what's going on in all the other programs. About our, our performing arts programs, our athletic programs, our club.
But you have other things. You have free lunch.
Free lunch.
And you also have no school supplies, like the school district supplies. There was not, none of that. Those are positives that.
Absolutely.
I just think that a, a, a better representation could be given. I don't know who does that.
I welcome your comments, uh, but we are on the same page, so to speak, because, um, we did have them tour. They spent better part of the, the day, almost, uh, from about, I think it started around, uh, ten o'clock. And it was past one, one thirty before they left. Uh, we had a Q and A with them. Uh, in our, our capstone room, in which we were explaining, uh, any of the questions that they had, uh, to enhance the programs. We do know that, uh, there are many factors that go in there, and there are some pluses and minuses to those surveys, and they have their self-interest. But we can't stick our head away from them. That's why we, we invited the realtors, because we want them to, uh, really promote, if you will. Our, all of what we have. Um, so many of the surrounding districts in this county know what we have. And try to emulate what we're having in our school district, uh, in terms of program response for instruction, as well as our athletic programs. Our facilities and so on and so forth. But I do agree with you, uh, again, uh, just because we have done these things. It doesn't mean that we're not trying to promote it in different ways, and we welcome your comments.
I know when we were looking to purchase our home, the realtor said she couldn't make a comment, yea or nay, on the district. But when we were looking at sites, the sites just give a poor representation, the social media sites, the. And, and I'm not looking at, you know, there's, there's always adversity no matter what. But just underneath the homes, after you look at all the specifics that the home provides, three-bedroom, four-bedroom. Then it gives the statistic for the school district.
You know, one of the things that, um, is a contributing factor to value of homeowners. Our school districts, obviously, right? And, um, I watch those recent sales on the Sunday newspaper. Uh, and of course, my eyes go not to Gosha and all of those, I applaud them, that's their, uh, interest. Our, my interest is Middletown School District, and I do see that the value of homes are steadily increasing. Um, I do get questions from the media as to what do I attribute that to? And I say, like a proud papa, I can only say that it's our school district.
Right.
Um, and I keep pounding that message based upon the evidence, not just because I'm the superintendent.
Right.
But because of the programs, uh, and facilities, and the, uh, our graduation rates. Are, are above state averages for our demographics. Are we happy with our graduation rate? Is, um, Pastor Williams, our board president articulated for us? No. Are we pleased that we are where we are? Yes. But every week, we, our instructional team, meet with the high school, we're enhancing our programs, we're meeting with teachers. To further advance that graduation rate. And also our grades three through eight, um, state testing scores. We have met back in, in August with our administrative team, who are talking to teachers, working very collaboratively with our teachers. To, um, provide students with, um, activities that will give them the automaticity necessary for mathematics. Um, conceptualizing.
And reinforcement.
Moving from the concrete, uh, to the abstract, because you're right, so many of these questions are no longer just the algorithm. What's six times eight, or this quadratic equation? What's behind that concept?
Right.
So that they can apply, because it's all about application. They're learning in a new setting. That's what it's all about. Because when you talk about, um, careers, when the recruiters come, whether it's military, whether it's in careers. They, the new wave, way things is done, here's the problem, team, solve it, and they come back. You gotta think out of the box.
Right.
As opposed to years ago, this is what I want done, do it.
I agree.
So it's a, a reverse type of thinking. So you have to prepare students for constantly thinking. That starts in kindergarten. With problem solving, creativity, what if, uh, write the, write the next chapter to the three little bears. Those are synthesis type of activities.
Correct.
So that's what we're looking for, analysis and synthesis type of activities for kids.
And I have just one more, um, if I may. So I had mentioned before about programs. And specifically, um, I'm looking for a program to help strategize with time management. And when they're coming from fifth grade specifically into middle school, because it's kind of a held-hand environment in elementary. And when they come to middle school, I'm, from my perspective, I've had to put a lot of time in as a parent, coming home from work. Working with my child to help her in her transition, like her, 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 her mental capacity. To transition versus being told you need to transition, versus being helped and giving the tools. You know, to help her actually physically do that is two different things.
Yes.
And, and I, I would like to see a study hall, because some of the things they're saying is, oh, she needs to study. She doesn't know how to study. Like, that's not something that has technically really been taught or given a format for. I would like to see that as well. Maybe a study hall or a program. The teacher said they used to have it back, back in the day, but they got rid of it. Maybe, you know, it could. Maybe, you know, it could come back to help these kids have a better success level.
All right. Um, a quick response to that is that, yes, uh, I was the principal of Montague Middle School for five years and there was a study skills class. The reason why it went away is not because it was, um, a design on, on the district's part, but because the state provided us more mandates in terms of required courses. So, something had to come out to put, put something in. However, to make the transition, uh, easier comparatively speaking, from fifth grade to sixth grade, um, unlike in grade seven through 12, you know, 44 minutes, 45 minutes, uh, they're changing periods. We double blocked, maybe, uh, this is probably our fourth year of September, you know, in the school district, that we double blocked to 92 minutes of ELA, 92 minutes of mathematics. So, they're having all the students in a double block. To make that transition a little easier, if you will, uh, spending more time with those teachers in there to develop the, uh, skills necessary, I'm not gonna say it's a study skills per se, but inside those extra, it's a double blocker period, so that they would be able to have more time for thinking, more extended type of activities, more time for group work, so that teachers can target what te, you know, students need, even though that everybody's in the sixth grade and everybody's not at the same level in ELA or math, vice versa. So, that the, you know, the approach to have, uh, group learning, uh, and, and periods of the day or periods of the week would help meet those particular needs of students, whether it's to enrich moving those kids who are on there or those who need a little more support because they may not be strong in some of the fifth or fourth grade skills moving up.
Okay. That's all. Thank you so much.
But that doesn't mean that, uh, you know, we, we constantly look at our middle school program. We know that that's, that, that in between...
Yes.
...and a very, very critical age.
Yes.
Now, we do have those specific, um, skill classes for all our ninth graders because ninth grade is a critical grade for, um, projecting to graduate in four years. We know statistically, in terms of looking at the analysis of our ninth graders, that at the end of ninth grade, you need 22 credits to graduate minimally in the state of New York. So, by the end of freshman year or ninth grade, you should have about five and a half, six credits, right? And we know that if you successfully clean ninth grade, you have an 85% chance or better to graduate in, uh, four years. And at the end of 10th grade, if you're sitting there with 12, 13 credits, you have like a 92, 92% rate. So, we know that that's very critical. So, we did put inside the, um, ninth grade program, uh, skills for success for the kids, for those things to do those things. Um, we can look at our middle school program, but the middle school program is so tight because of the state requirements.
Okay. I would really like to see something developed.
I hear you. I hear you.
I really would. Can I just suggest?
Sure, it's not pulling on Jeff here, it's right here.
Can I just suggest, um, if I may, uh, it sounds like you are an extremely, um, important advocate for your daughter. Um, and are you, are you part of the parent-teacher organization in your school? Number one. Number two, have you sat down with the, uh, leader of the school, um, your principal? And number three, do we still have the school improvement teams where there's community advocates?
Yes, we do.
Which I sat on also as a, as a engaged parent, um, because it sounds like what you're saying is so important, um, not to let things slip through the cracks. Uh, there's so much between, you know, pre-K to graduation day... Right. ...that happens and at every step of the way, um, you know, and it's a, it's a learning experience as a parent. Absolutely. So, I really recommend, because this has been great here at the board, um, in a boardroom. They know who I am at school. Yes, good. There's no worries there. Great. Um, so, thank you. Thank you for advocating for your child, but not only for your child, for other children as well. That's what we do. No problem. Thank you so much, sir.
And I, I'll, I'll say this, I'll say this as well. One, two, three, four of us, four of us currently have, have, um, children in the district. And, uh, uh, you know, I, I have one in, in high school, in middle school and one in the elementary school as well. So, the same struggles, we, we, we get it, we get it, we understand. And, and Mrs. Blumenau's, Mrs. Blumenau's, um, children came through the district and have now moved on. They're grown with beards bigger than mine. You know, so, uh, but, uh, it ta, it takes parents like that, like you, that will be strong advocates for their children. So, so, thank you. Thank you.
I wonder if they'll get seated up here.
Doc?
Aldente? Wait, Aldente, Alda, Aldente.
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 The literal translation to that means bite to the teeth.
Oh, dente.
Dente. Got it?
Capisce. Okay, got it.
Three and a half minutes.
So, I know how to tell time, Ms. Blumenau, so I wanna make it clear, I have rarely if ever doubledipped and come to the microphone twice. That needs to be clear. Number two, I wanna make it clear, I would like to address you as a former board member, not as a, as an alderman for the city. Number three, I would like to remind you that I got my first seat on this board 36 years ago, so, I am catching up to Mr. Perrino and if you do it in dog ears, I have surpassed Mr. Perrino. So, I wanna make that clear. Number four, when I look at second opportunity to address, probably nobody in this room remembers that. I put that on this agenda and I put that on this agenda for exactly this reason, that I felt that if somebody stayed through a meeting and they wanted to address something that occurred during the meeting, they shouldn't have to wait two weeks to come back and follow up the conversation. So, pat on the back for me. Number five, the best advocate for a child is a parent. And I will, I will make a bet in public that if you persevere, you will be reassured that your child is getting a very good education and her needs are being met. My kids all, all three daughters went K-12, they went on to be very successful and 98% of the time, their needs were being met. Number six, I'm sorry that the other young lady, you're one of them, but the other young lady is not here because I think she was alarmingly misinformed. If I closed my eyes, and I didn't, I did not doze off, but if I did, I could go back to 30 years ago and hear the exact same observations. My day, we always challenged DNA, well, that can't be right. I said, well, you know what? If you go after five years, it's gonna be equalization and assessment. In my day, we got a demographic study and I sat in that seat and said, well, that can't be right. Look at all these families moving into what we used to call apartments. And the demographer said, well, yeah, they all have two kids, but by the time those kids are in kindergarten, they don't fit in that apartment and they may or may not be in your district any longer. And if si, if history serves me correctly, your demo, demographics have been spot-on every single time. So, for this young lady to start all that, the crowding and the thing and the thing and the thing, and I'm not faulting her, I, I agree with you, Pastor, she came forward and asked the questions and I compliment the administration for just magically being prepared to answer those questions. Um, so, we recycle some of our concepts, we recycle ideas. What, I got 17 seconds left? So, um, and that's, that's a good thing and a bad thing. Um, but it's just amusing at this point in my life to just hear the same, same thing again. And also, 12 seconds. Guess who advocated for Realtor tours of this district in Carol Henkin's days, when I did the informal public relations for the district? And here we are, 35 years later, having the same ideas and the same way to, to let people know how good we are. Thank you very much for your indulgence. I promise I'll take them back for at least another week or two.
Thank you. Mr. Meyer, our Town of Walk Hill, Town of Walk Hill Councilman, welcome. I was gonna, I was gonna greet you in just a minute, but welcome, welcome to the mic.
No, thank you guys. Um, great job. Thank you very much for the presentation and I certainly appreciate it. Um, I, I first wanna thank you guys for the great job you do, uh, for the school district and everything. Um, I'm actually, uh, one of the, I'm the only board member on our town board that lives in the Middletown School District and has a kid in the Middletown School District as well. She actually attends this school here. Um, and I wanna say that it, it's a great school. I'm looking forward to her graduation at the end of May, um, or June, whenever it is, and her going to Twin Towers next year. She's actually looking very forward to it. She talks about it all the time. So, um, thank you guys for everything you do. Um, I don't think there was ever an issue with, uh, your management. Um, I think you guys do a great job in managing the district. Uh, I think there's a lot to manage here, um, and you guys do a great job and I don't think that that was ever an issue. Um, and I don't think, in terms of, uh, you guys keeping on top of everything, I think everybody knew that you guys ha, were on top of everything and were on the ball. And, and I've reached out to a number of, of school board members and, uh, you know, I have tried to reach out to the superintendent a few times to try to sit down and, and have some conversations about what's happening. As I said, I am the only board member in the school district. So, you know, when it comes to, um, new development that we're looking to do in the town, I'm constantly trying to figure out what research we need to do and what's happening and what resources we have available and sort of where we stand. I don't, I'm not one of those people, you know, I think education is a really big thing, you know, like I'm, I'm one, I, I'm constantly learning. As some of the board members know, I'm constantly asking questions and, and I think that that's our job to do and, um, and I wanna make sure that, that we have all the information when we're making decisions, not just a piece of it. And, um, it was great to hear the demographic information because I was given some information that I thought it was about 1.6 or 1.7 students per two-bedroom. So, that was sort of the calculations that I was doing it on and obviously, that would come out with a lot higher numbers than what you guys came up with tonight. Um, so, certainly that, that was a little bit of a calculation error. Um, but, you know, we do have a lot of development and I, whereas I appreciate you guys looking at approved properties, um, as a town board member, we, what we assess is what, what's coming in next, right? So, you guys look at what we've already approved, we look at what's coming in next. So, the idea from our perspective is, we constantly are looking for updates as a town board as to, you know, how what we're doing affects you, you know? And, um, I don't know if that means that, you know, um, I need to come to board of your meetings or maybe, you know, you guys can come to some of our meetings or maybe we can just have open, open dialogue and, 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 you know, we can meet every once in a while and have that conversation. Um, you know, towns work a little bit different than cities. You know, cities have a mayor and they have aldermen and a common council, so, you know, they're, they're more of an executive, uh, you know, an executive versus a legislative branch. A town board is made up of essentially five board members, all with equal, equal vote and are all equal. So, we are all responsible for doing our due diligence as it relates to gaining information. So, whereas information could get to our supervisor, that information doesn't always necessarily get to us as town board members. And, uh, you know, and obviously, we know, you tell one person something, there's always a filter. You know, there could always be a filter. So, I, I always like to make sure that I'm doing my due diligence. So, I appreciate everything you guys did tonight and the information I got. I found it very valuable. I'm sure everybody else found it valuable too. And, um, you know, we are working on a number of projects and a lot of those projects will affect the Middletown School District. I'm sorry, am I done? And I'm sorry, I know, I'm, I'm taking a lot of time, but, um, you know, there, there is a project being looked at on Smith Road, which will, which is in the Middletown School District. There are some of the other projects that, that are being looked at now. Some of the code changes will affect some of the ability for the town to be able to do more high-density, uh, development within the Mechanics Town area. So, these are all things that are gonna not only affect the school district in terms of the students, but it'll also affect the roads, the, you know, the infrastructure, some of those other things. And, um, you know, whereas that isn't really in your purview, some of it will affect, you know, you have Mechanics Town School District over there, will affect some of the traffic flow and some of the other things in the area and we kinda wanna know what your feedback is. So, any way we can get feedback from you guys, we would love it. You know, at least I would. And I would certainly appreciate that. So, um, you know, please, and I have an open door, call me anytime, let me know what's going on from your perspective and, uh, you know, whatever we can do to kinda open up that dialogue, I'm all for. And as I said, I think you guys are doing a great job here and I certainly appreciate it. Um, and you guys should all be commended. Congratulations on the graduation last night. Um, that's great and, uh, hopefully, we could just continue moving forward. So, thank you very much.
Neil?
Thank you.
Neil? Neil, I saved all your messages. I had to get more memory from my phone.
Thanks.
Is there anybody else that'd like to address the board? Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Meyer. Communication is the key. Communication is the key. And, um, and, and that's what we're, we're endeavoring to do. I wanna say, I wanna say this real quick and we're gonna move forward. Uh, the young lady that was here earlier, I know her personally and she comes from a good place. And so, so she's gaining, she's, she's, she's looking for information. I told, so, so we told her.
I think we're all okay.
You speak, you speak, you s, we do, we do. Well, some people do, but, if we be honest, those of us that know, but at the end of the day, at the end of the day, um, I told her, it's always good to go to the horse's mouth first. So, uh, let's, 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 let's move on, let's move on. Committee reports, um, audit committee, uh, audit committee, Mrs. Tobiasin, please.
Yes, the audit committee met last Wednesday, January 29th. At that time, we reviewed and approved the weekly claim reports for October 15th, 21st,